All right. Okay, welcome to the Village of Rybrook Planning Board Meeting. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome again. My name is Rob Goodman. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Board members also in attendance tonight, Scott Mendelson, Amy Schoen, and John Grzan. Also in attendance is our Village Attorney, George Alcindrados, Superintendent of Public Works, Michael Nowak, Village Planning Consultant from Hardesty and Hanover, Sarah Brown, and in spirit, our Village Planning Secretary, who makes things run behind the scenes, Tara Orlando. And, and last but far from least, is David Heiser, our Liaison from the Board of Trustees.
It filled my heart.
That's right. How many, it's embarrassing how many times I would have forgotten you if you add up.
What do you mean, honey? Every time. I have to pick your.
Every time. Every ti- yeah, that's right. John was leaning over to give me the signal.
I'm gonna get it by.
That's because I gave John.
Well done. Okay, in the minutes, I gather from Tara that the minutes will be on for next month. All right, that's fine. So our first application is 900 King Street. And I think there have been, if I recall.
Open the public hearing?
Oh, yes. Have a motion to second to open the public hearing, please.
Moved. Second.
Mr. Grzan?
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, sir. Give us the update.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zara Steinmetz here once again, representing Sunrise Senior Living. Just so you're clear, our entire team is here. I'm joined tonight, once again, by our clients from Sunrise, Clyde McGraw and Colin Buckley, my colleague Vincent Padone, Stuart Lacks, and Valerie Mutterperle from our project architectural team, Anthony Nestor from JMC, our project engineers and planners, and Rick Parisi, our project manager. We did a fairly thorough presentation when we were here last month. Just as a reminder, we are here specifically with regard to amended PUD approval. The project itself was approved back in 2021. There were a few specific or technical changes that we walked you through at the last meeting. We can go back and do that again if you need, but that is not our intention. We want to try to do a fairly efficient presentation. It is a public hearing and hear the comments that are to be presented. We want you to also know that since we met with you, we did have a presentation and met with the Architectural Review Board. We have been also working on responding to some engineering and fire department issues that arose, and we're pleased with how that is unfolding. I also want to make sure your board knows that one of the comments that we got from Mr. Oliveri, your outside consulting engineer, were concerns about water service in Violia Water Department or Water Company. We've had touch with Violia, and I want the record to reflect that we are aware that Violia is concerned that there could be a lack of capacity portions of the village. We are aware of that. We are analyzing that, working in conjunction with Violia. As far as we're concerned, we know we do not have a project without that water. So we acknowledge and expressly would anticipate a condition of approval that we need to have water service from Violia before construction would commence. So as far as we're concerned, that is not an issue for tonight. We acknowledge and appreciate Mr. Oliveri making sure we were aware. I have been in touch with the village manager on this very topic already. That is not something that we're prepared to deal with tonight. In fact, it's really, at the moment, being studied by your water company.
Have you been in touch with ConEd? Yeah, regarding gas?
Yes, we have. We have confirmation.
So we'll get to that, we'll get to that when Anthony gets up. So we are aware of the ConEd, the prior moratorium, the changes that have occurred, and we will address. We want, what we really wanted to do tonight, we wanted to address some of the questions that you specifically presented to us at the last meeting about some of the changes. Specifically, you asked some questions about the sizes of some of the units, how that compared. We are going to walk through that. We have an architectural presentation. We have some engineering drawings that we can walk through. But again, tonight is specifically a public hearing, as far as we're concerned, on the changes. We are not here to conduct a public hearing on a project that was already approved and it remains valid and subsisting. So we want to walk through those changes. We have, Stuart, you're gonna, you're gonna take the next piece.
Yeah.
We're gonna walk through the architecture first. We're happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. Oh, I, I, I know that Mr. Oliveri sent around, circulated a memo on April 8th. Have you seen that?
Yes.
He basically said that the issues seemed to be addressed, but he proposed two conditions. Are you, are those conditions acceptable?
I'm gonna let Mr. Anthony Nestor from JMC address that when he gets up. I think they are. And again, most of Anthony's concerns, we were pleased, we were able to address those before he wrote that second memo. And one of his two expressed conditions related specifically to Violia.
Right, exactly.
Which is why we want you to hear that. We're very well aware of that.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm gonna turn it over to Stuart. Our entire team is here to answer questions, and we look forward to conducting the public hearing and making sure we're complete on these amended issues.
Sure.
Chairman, members of the board, Stuart Lacks, perconisement and project architect.
Stuart?
Yeah?
When you go over the plans, the two things I'm in particular interested, I would like to see a comparison of the floor plan of the townhouses prior and now. And then if you could give me an overview of the parking for each of the three living facilities.
Okay.
General overview about the parking.
Okay.
And I'm sure somewhere along the way, you will address the comment that was raised in the letter Snyder and Snyder on behalf, on behalf of the Arbers, where the height of the building.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. The maximum height. Maximum height.
Those are the three items that are of interest to me.
I don't have a presentation board on that one. That was addressed in the last, last time.
Was that the point gonna be raised in your referral to the Architectural Review Board?
It was supposed to be.
It was. Yeah, okay, good.
So this plan, I'm not sure how well you can, you can see it, but what we, the plan on the left is what was approved. This is specifically dimensions between the townhouses. On the left is the plan as approved in 2021.
That's too, I cannot make a head of tail of that. Honestly, I don't know what I'm looking at there. Could you just give me a floor plan of the, of the townhouses?
Yeah, that's a different, there was a question about proximity of the townhouses between one another, and this is really just to show you the setbacks at the rear to the, wetlands have not changed. The setback off of Arbor Drive and the property line have not changed. The setbacks also, you know, to the, to the wetlands to the west have not changed. Really just some minor dimensional changes between the townhouses. So the locations of the townhouses are substantially similar to what they work for.
And Stuart, are building to building separations still building code and zoning compliant?
Yeah, it's all, that is all, remains compliant, yes.
So the numbers like eight, eight two, eight feet, I guess two inches, is that the distance between the, the units?
That is between the units. In that, in that eight foot two and becomes nine foot six, that's, I think that's actually.
Yes, yes.
Front patio to front patio. That's not even building corner to building corner. In some locations, it's building corner. In some locations, it's patio where the patios were a little closer.
Now, the, the second parking, you have expanded the parking in front of the building, correct?
Correct. We've gone from.
So there are two parking adjacent to each other for each building? Or is there one parking by the building and one to the side?
There, it is, actually, that, that may show up on the, not really easy to show, but on the next plan. But it sort of is in a house. There was a driveway with a car space and a park, and a parking garage, and that was two spaces. We've now made the parking garage accommodate two cars, and therefore, the driveway has also been widened to accommodate two cars. And that's for each townhouse, not for each building, because each building is, contains two townhouses.
And how did the layout of the second floor changed by bringing the master bedroom down to the ground floor?
Hasn't really.
We didn't bring the master down. The master was already down.
The master bedroom was already down. It was one of the other bedrooms. That space remains, but it is no longer a bedroom. It does not meet the building code requirements of a bedroom. It's really just a den.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, the Snyder and Snyder raised that question. Is there a possibility that that space could be turned into a fourth bedroom?
So, our answer to that, Mr. Grzan, is that it can't be because it won't have a closet and it will be like any other room, which would be a den. That is an issue of enforcement for the village, obviously, and the irony. I just want to give you the second half of my answer because I didn't want to have to say this, but in light of your question and the comment from Leslie, the irony is when we engaged in our discussions with the Arbers, the Arbers was candid with us, and they told us that that condition actually has occurred at a number of the townhouse units at the Arbers. So quite frankly, I don't know why they would push that issue, but our residents, they're, they're not gonna be designed for that. We have no intention of doing that, and nobody's going to be having their children living with them. So we will have a lovely den upstairs, but there will certainly not be a second bedroom upstairs.
Michael, is there?
And a third, an additional bedroom.
Michael, if the homes are designed as a three-bedroom house, and we all know that if there is a space, we as an owners are gonna convert that four, space to the fourth bedroom, do they, do they need a permit from you to do that?
So a building permit would be required for alterations to the interior of the structure, yes.
Now, if we don't want the fourth bedroom, can we put that in the, in the approval resolution?
Supposing you outbuild a closet instead of inserting it into the room? You, supposing somebody wanted to build a closet on the outside wall?
This is a building department issue. This is an interior, we're, an interior issue that, that the building department would have the jurisdiction to decide whether or not it's appropriate under the code to do it or not do it. I, I don't really think it's a planning issue, really, except to the extent that it affects the footprint of the, and the dimensions of the, of the homes themselves. But if it's a matter of redistributing and reconfiguring the interior, I mean, you know, people can do whatever they want to do, subject to whatever the authorities say.
Well, except, except that I think it would be a planning issue in that you're inviting more people into, to live there, including more parking now, so there's gonna be more cars, there's gonna be more traffic.
I couldn't agree more with you.
There's gonna be, you know, you're, you're creating living space and accommodating it with both the living space and the parking.
But that's not what its intention is. And if people do that, and they do it illegally, it is an enforcement issue.
So our code does have regulations on how much parking is needed for a structure. So obviously, that would be a building department enforcement issue, no different than any other development. You know, homeowners can apply for a permit for certain things unless there are restrictive covenants or something in place. A person could, you know, potentially apply.
My question is very simple addressed to the village attorney. Can we specify in resolution that, that this is a three-bedroom home?
Yeah, but I don't, can you? I mean, theoretically, you can do anything. Whether or not it's, is valid is another issue.
It would be more difficult for the plan, for the building department later on to issue a permit to change that to a bedroom.
Not necessarily, because the building department would look at what's permissible under the code. So the site plan approval is on the structure. It's on, you know, how many units are proposed? How many parking spaces are proposed? Does it all comply with zoning? Whether or not someone goes back and says, there's a big closet here. I want to make it a bedroom, goes to the building department, and they say, you can or you cannot because based on whatever the code says. If they do make it a fourth bedroom anyway, or a fifth bedroom, or a sixth, that's an enforcement issue in as much as the building department and the village will have to go out and say, you're not allowed to do this. The reality is, and I'm not suggesting that anyone does this, but things happen every day. You can't necessarily be on someone at their front door every day and say, I'm monitoring you. So that's why we say it's an enforcement issue in as much as it comes down to, down the road.
And if I could try to put the board at ease and follow George's comment, unlike other properties in the village, this one is a senior living community. It's a 62 and over. It's age restricted. It's rental.
I think that's the key word. That is the key word, rent.
I didn't want to interrupt you while you were.
You did put me at ease. Thank you. Yes, please.
While it's lovely to have some extra room.
Yes. Okay, let's move on.
I'm not gonna be having my grandkids living there.
They can have a convertible sofa.
They can visit. They're legally allowed to visit, but they're not living there.
Mr. Stewart, he was going to walk me through the parking for each of the facilities.
And I'm trying to think what would be the best plan to do that.
Just summarize the number of parking that, that you have, what's required. Is it all in the building? Is it outside the building?
No, come on, we got that. Oh, oh, well, no.
Want to jump ahead?
Stuart? Yeah. How many slides do you have in your presentation? Is it better if you just go through it and then, instead of jumping around? I know the board may have questions, but I feel like when you have your presentation, why don't you go through it?
You're right. That's right.
Insert it back.
No, no, I didn't mean you to answer that at the beginning. I just want, when you get to that area, just highlight it for me. That's what I meant. I'm sorry. Yeah, no.
Keep it flowing.
Keep it flowing, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Really, just the next slide, which sort of answers the question that was raised last time. The change in the footprint of the relocating of the bedroom and the expansion of the garage does not change the overall height of the townhouses. I will make note that we have dimensioned this based on the dimension to the ridge of the townhouse. The village code actually measures building height on a slope roof to the midpoint of the roof. But just for convenience and simplicity's sake, we've done this to the, to the peak. But that, that 29 six applies that top row, actually, I'm sorry, the left column is the, the townhouses as designed and presented in 2021, and then the two in the middle and on the right are the townhouses as now contemplated in this submission. And then just lastly, there was a, a comment about the appearance of the building. This is the, one of the renderings we presented to the ARB and received favorable comment on them. We think it's an attractive and inviting place to live. And that's really the extent of my submission. Should we go to Anthony and then to Pat?
Okay.
Evening, Chairman, members of the board, staff. My name is Anthony.
Can you speak louder, please?
Yeah, or in the mic. There we go.
I don't think that's working, anyway. I know, it doesn't come over on the TV either.
Is that why it's not working?
No, no, it should be working on its own.
Okay. Well, I'll be brief with regards to Mr. Oliveri's comment memo of April 8th and with regards to the conditions that he had recommended in his memorandum. So the first comment that he had is in regard to the will serve letter. And I believe Mr. Steinmetz has eloquently and adequately addressed that comment to you, board, in his opening remarks. And the second comment is in regards to the health department, with regards to the sanitary sewer. We have no issue. The plan will not change one way or the other with regards to the design and where the sewer is located. It's just a matter of whether there will be easements required onsite or will, as we hope and planned, is preparing a maintenance and operation agreement satisfactory to the village for the, for the maintenance of the sewer.
Michael, doesn't, pardon, Mr. Nestor, does it matter to the village if it's owned by the owner or it's owned by the village?
To me, it doesn't matter. The Arbers in itself, by approval, is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of their sewers. We, as a village, have easements over those pipes for enforcement and for inspection reasons. So it, it doesn't matter to me.
But any problem in the future between the connection point, where the village connection point and the property, who is responsible? They are responsible.
That would be dependent on the agreement. As of right now, it's a private lateral, so it would be responsible.
So why would the Westchester County be reluctant to approve privately on the sewer line?
So there's, there's language in the law with regards to how a sewer line operates, whether it's operating as a commercial entity or residential entity. So there's, there's language in there which may dictate. This is a little bit of a unique situation because they're tying into a, a sewer line that goes into a private development. So, which is, which has been approved as private, which has been approved as private sewers with the maintenance by the Arbers. So that's gonna be something that we're gonna have to work out, but I don't foresee a problem with that.
All right.
Mike, that can be addressed in a second.
And then I think that was about it, but I did want to ask, while I'm up here too, with regards to ConEdison and the gas service, we have just conversations with ConEdison, and we have, I believe, an agreement with regards to providing gas service and electric to the property.
Even though New York State law is what it is now?
We have documentation from ConEdison's in that they're gonna provide us with gas service.
So what was your?
We had made, we had made service, an application for service during the original approval and before the moratorium took effect. So we technically were in line with, with their grandfather into the process with regards to.
Who is going to address Mr. Oliveri's comments with regard to the stormwater management?
So we have addressed all of Mr. Oliveri's.
No, no, but he did respond that you may have to do additional.
That was part of the original approval as well.
Once the demolition takes place, yeah.
Okay, yep. The location of the proposed facility that we're proposing is in, within the footprint of the existing building. So obviously, we could not test in that exact location. So what we did is we provided testing just outside the building as close as we could and based our design off of that information. So Mr. Oliveri is just saying, once the building is demolished, we just need to confirm that the information that we have designed is, is proper and adequate.
Right, that, you're referring to, I think, three and four.
Correct, right.
Mr. Chairman, I think when I read through their response to Oliveri's letters, I feel that the comments or questions that were left from the previous approval are pretty much addressed.
I, I think that was Mr. Oliveri's assessment as well.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that should be kind of behind us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments from the board?
I just, did the Architectural Review Board address the windows at all?
Valerie Mutterperle, colleagues of Stuart's. They did. They, their general assessment or comment was that they felt that the building design was much improved from the last time that they saw it, that we had worked hard to address a lot of the Arbers' comments in terms of the bulk and the height and reducing that, the overall appearance of it, and that, you know, the architectural detailing on the building, which includes, you know, the roofs and the windows, was, you know, fit in with the area of Rybrook. We're, we're of course gonna go before them again, but they, they literally said that it wasn't much improved and did not look sort of that close anymore.
It feels very closed. It feels prison-like. Those windows look like bars. They just are not open.
They actually said that they didn't think it looked like a jailhouse.
Oh, okay, well, okay.
Because reasonable minds may differ, I guess.
Yes, of course.
When I look through the amended plan, I don't have a problem with it. I think it probably to some, there are some improvements which I actually like. So when I try and to look, I said, we as, since we have the final approval on this, I said, what, what do we need to close out before we could decide on moving this forward? I feel that we need an input from the village ARB.
Of course, yeah.
Now, do we refer that to the ARB and they respond back to us, or do they respond back to board? I don't know who comes first, who comes second here.
I think we actually referred in the last meeting to the ARB.
We did. We did, okay.
So, so the ARB, you know.
And, right, we did.
Yeah, the ARB is going to have to come up with a, an approval, I assume, whatever, whatever they do.
Well, that's, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That's a question for legal, though, because typically, ARB does not issue approvals until a planning board issues a site plan.
I think that that.
So, so that's just a question for council to figure out.
Right, right.
If they look, if the board's looking for a recommendation back from ARB, then maybe, that might be possible, but I don't know if they could issue an approval. I don't know.
Well, independently, right. I mean, in terms, you're talking about timing. Because we, we have some restrictions as to, I mean, we're gonna have to wait until the secret review is done. We're gonna have to wait. I think the county is coming back with some, a permitting issue that they're addressing. And so we, you know, it's, it's not coming to a vote today. It'll come to a vote next month when all these things are done. And then presumably after that, if, once the site plan is approved, at that point, the ARB would, would get the full project, and then they would evaluate it from the ARB standpoint, so.
And just one point of information that I want to respond to Mr. Grzan, because I spoke with Jen Gray after the ARB meeting. There was some confusion that seemed to play out a little bit at that meeting. The ARB is not actually making a recommendation to you on the site plan. Their jurisdiction is as to the aesthetics.
Architecture, period.
Exactly, purely on materials, colors, and textures.
They seem to forget.
Well, that's the reason why Mike was saying that our, they, they need a, an approved site plan before they can conduct their inquiry.
100% agree with that, and I want to make Mr. Grzan comfortable that you need, you need to approve these, these technical amendments first.
It would take more than, it would take a little more than that to make me comfortable on this subject, but that's, that's a different topic. The next thing, I think we need the input from the Village Emergency Task Force.
Yeah, I think there, that's in the, the Emergency Task Force.
And what's, what's Village Safety Housing Task Force? What is that?
So the Emergency Task Force and this.
Are they one and the same?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's the first time I, I seen that written down.
We did have a meeting with everybody in the room, and I believe there should be a memo circulating or should be coming out very shortly.
Haven't seen it yet.
I don't believe it came out, but yeah, there should be some documentation of that meeting, because we had that, what, two, three weeks ago?
Yeah, a couple.
I know it was scheduled. I knew, I knew it had been scheduled.
Then we need a resolution, which I think we have, with regard to the comments from Mr. Oliveri.
Yeah, yes, yes, there are conditions that need to be, would be put into the final.
And then the only other two things that I can think of, of course, would be stormwater management plan and a construction plan. Yeah. Those are the two documents which, I, I don't know, Michael, do those two documents have to be submitted before the final approval?
Both of those documents have already been approved.
The construction management plan needs updating.
Updating.
For what purpose?
Well, they have, the water company is listed as a different company. They're, they're, go over it. It was, it was.
Well, Violia is a, is the owner of Suez, so that's.
It's there as Suez.
I understand, but in the previous approval, the consultants did review a construction management plan, and that was already approved. So if there's updates to it, yeah, that's not a problem.
They're not, they're not major things. They're just probably, you know, just titled.
So, so the applicant doesn't have to submit new documents for review, because those are already approved.
Right.
Just update who the contractors are, who the utilities are.
Which could be expressed conditions in the resolution. We have no, we would have no objection if, if that gets drafted into the resolution. On the construction management plan, the name needs to be changed.
Yeah, just, just the cast of characters.
Your, your original resolution for the original approval four years ago had, how many conditions, Clyde?
Many, right?
I read a lot of resolutions.
Many.
You had a lot of conditions in there. So we're, we're good if you had some conditions on just these amendments.
I think at this point, it's probably, if any members of the public would like to speak to this application.
If you wish, I can address the question on parking.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, absolutely, yeah.
I was waiting for that. I was waiting for that.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So what I have up is the zoning table from the first page of the civil drawings. I will just quickly read through required, which is this column, in terms of required number of parking spaces. For the independent living, 126, that's one space per dwelling unit, 126 dwelling units, 126 spaces. At the assisted living building, it's a half a space per dwelling unit. We've got 85 dwelling units in assisted living, 42 and a half, which rounds up to 43 spaces. And the townhouses require two and a half spaces per dwelling unit. We have 20 townhouses, that's 50 spaces required, so a total of 219. What we're providing.
Are there any guest parkings?
That is included in the guest parking. That is the calculation from your regulations.
Okay.
But as you will see, we do have some, we're providing, proposing to provide more spaces than are required. For the independent living, we are providing 126 spaces in the garage underneath the building, so they're all protected, plus an additional seven spaces on grade, and after I go through my numbers, I will flip back to the site plan to give you exactly where those spaces are. For the assisted living building, there are 51 on-grade parking spaces, and again, I'll show you those locations on the site plan. And the townhouses, we're actually proposing 60, as we've talked about. There are 20 townhouses, each one has a two-car garage, that's 40 garage spaces, and then there are an additional 20 in the driveways, for a total of 60 at the townhouses. 244 in total.
Okay.
It's down here. I believe they have to go. I'm going to use Mr. Parisi's site plan, just because it's the nicest one to look at. Obviously, the two entrances to the garage for all 126 spaces for the independent living building, there is some spaces out at the front entrance, main entry, that could be for visitor's start spaces as well. The 51 spaces for the assisted living building are here, they are here and here, and that is it for the independent, assisted living building, all close to the main entrance, and then obviously, for the townhouses, it's two-car garages and two-car driveways.
Any parking for the assisted living underneath the ground in the building?
No, no, the assisted living is.
Isn't that interesting, that in the living, where people can move freely, you have it in the basement, but people that need help to get into the building, they outdoor.
I think.
Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, you are, but actually, in our experience, for assisted living and memory care, very, very, very few of our residents.
Memory care, for sure, not, yeah.
For sure, yeah.
Nobody make jokes. Nobody make jokes.
That's it, Stuart.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, if there are any members of the public here that would like to address the application, sure, come on up, introduce yourself, and let's look it through.
Good evening, honourable chairman and members of the board. My name is Leslie Snyder. I'm a partner in the law firm of Snyder and Snyder. I'm here today on behalf of the Arbor's Homeowners Association. As you know, the Arbers will be sharing a road with Sunrise, and you spent a lot of time back in, I think it was 2021 now, with all the planning board conditions. It seems that Sunrise will be a good partner. We've had a conversation with them, and we're hopeful that we'll continue to work together. There's just some, you know, there's always the devil in the details. So first of all, I would ask that the applicant be required for all the plans, like these slideshows, if they could make them part of the record, because they submitted some things to the ARB, and they submitted some things to you, and they're a little bit different than what they actually filed with the board. When I get to the devil of the details, it really deals with the height of this building. So if you remember back in 2021, there was a lot of different pictures, and it was like, what is the actual maximum height of the building? And they never showed it, they wouldn't show it for whatever reason, but finally, they did, and when the village board approved it, they actually sent it to the architectural review board and said, look, we understand this is the height that they're saying, and it has to do with like the mean height that they were showing, but if there's anything that you could do to lower the height, because, you know, when you drive down Arbor Drive, there's going to be now this big building, not a small one, and if there's anything they could do to reduce the height, we'd like you to consider it. Well, this board, and I commend you, you sent it to the architectural review board, and at their meeting, which was a special meeting, which, thank God, we found out about it, they actually reviewed the height, and they started asking questions, like, what actually is the size of the mechanical equipment you have to keep up there? The one nice thing that I have to say Sunrise did is originally, they had this huge building, they had all these dormers, and it was very imposing, and they got rid of the dormers, and they're really working, and I applaud them for it. They've done, you know, great try trying to change a design of a building, I think someone called it a cell, I've heard other things about it, but they really are working towards using nicer materials. But we would really ask this board to please, before you approve anything, let's find out what the actual height of the mechanical equipment is, and see if there's anything we can do to lower the height of the building. The second thing that was asked, and this is also a site plan consideration, was the berm.
You don't mean lowering the building, you mean lowering the equipment or the roof?
Right, so that maybe then they could change slightly the facade. The reason why it's very imposing at the top and goes very high up, I forgot what the last number is, maybe we could ask them to put it, because it's not on their plans, what the actual height. So when you look at the building, you're going to see the top of the building, and it's pretty high, but I think if their mechanical equipment is not that big, maybe they don't need to have all that covering to make it, you know, I'm sure they're trying to make it imposing, to make it look grand, and I totally understand that. Look, they've got a product to sell, and people want to go to a nice facility, and we respect that, but anything that they could do to sort of try to lower that a little bit would be great. The other thing, and I know it's expensive and they don't want to do it, but maybe there's some other technique, is there's a berm. So when you drive up Arbor Drive, there's a small berm, but if the berm was slightly extended, then it wouldn't be like you drive up and there's this jarring building that you're going to look at to the right. If you could extend the berm, you may not see the, you know, there's still going to be a big building back there, but it probably won't, it'll be softened. So apparently, to extend the berm of learning is quite expensive, that's why people don't want to do it. But maybe there's, you know, they've got these great architects and engineers, they've got a great team, maybe there's something else they could do, again, to sort of soften what the look of the building is going to be for people going down Arbor Drive. Those are really our major issues, issues with like the units and how many people are in the units, you know, I'm sure they'll abide by it, I'm sure if you put, you know, you're going to put a restriction, these are, you know, three-bedroom units, it'll be what it's going to be, and we understand that, but we're hopeful that, you know, we're going to have to be partners somewhat together, because we have a road that we're sharing, and so they're going to be using our road, we don't want to be disturbing, they don't want to disturb us, so we're very hopeful for that. We just would ask if there's anything we can do, even if there's something we can do collaboratively to look at on the height with the berm. There's also some sidewalk detailing, it was like a very ugly fence, this was all in our letter, my letter dated May 13th, March 13th, excuse me, to you folks, but there's like, our architect had pointed out, there's like some sidewalk detail of a retaining wall, they were putting up some kind of like chain link fence over retaining wall, rather than, you know, you could make up, you can make retaining walls look a little nicer than just have chain link on top of it. So that was just another suggestion, that maybe you can, they could do it with stones, they won't have to have something of a chain link fence. I know that at the architectural review board meeting, I think councilperson Epstein was looking for like a sidewalk along Arbor Drive. I don't know what they had, but she's concerned that people are going to be coming out of Arbor Drive, and they're going to want to walk, and Arbor Drive's, you know, a busy road, they've got a lot of residents at the Arbers, and they're going to have a lot of residents here, so, you know, I think we have a few little details in that, but that's, those are our main concerns. We appreciate you taking the time, and it's unfortunate, the architectural review board did ask a lot of questions and asked for a lot of details, and they didn't see any response back on that. So I think, you know, obviously.
I think they're going to be reviewing it again for the amendments, but just to that point, I mean, our jurisdiction really relates to the amendments to the plan that have been proposed.
Totally understood.
We're really restricted from opening up issues that have theoretically would have been addressed in the original site plan review.
Except the height was never addressed, because that was something that the village board, when they approved it, they specifically said, we send it, we asked that, and I can give you the quote, but we asked that the architectural review board look at the height. The resolution dated September 16 specifically says that the applicant has to secure approval from the architectural review board during its review, the architectural review board shall determine whether there are any reasonable and feasible options to reduce the roof line of the IL building in a way that maintains screening of the rooftop mechanicals.
And they didn't do it, they didn't do it.
But if the height of the IL building exceed, that's what's shown on the plan.
So are you saying, and I don't know the history of this, was there, the ARB ever come to a resolution?
No, they never completed it.
They never completed that with you, that's right.
Would that not be a plan? Would that not be a plan?
They said, this looks terrible, and then the developer ran away for four years, or three years, and, I mean, and you can see that Sunrise has really made an effort to make this a much better project than it previously was, and we applaud them for that. We just would ask if there's any way we collaboratively do anything so.
Yeah, I mean.
Have less of an impact, which I think is part of site plan, because this is sort of like mushed in with it, so to speak.
I think both issues that you raised, Ms. Snyder, the berm and the height, to me, they are planning issues.
I agree with you.
They're not architectural, they're visual, they're planning. Now, I think we really should have the applicant address those issues, both of those issues to the planning board. Maybe just simply relocating the location of the equipment on the roof. If moving it way towards the center, you already kind of scale it down.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my concern is, and I would need sort of input from council on this, is exactly, you know, what we can address is part of our jurisdiction here. The height of the building may in fact not be something that is in our bailiwick right now, although it may have been, remember that originally, we were only making reports and recommendations, we did not have the jurisdiction to approve the original site plan. We have jurisdiction now because we are approving amendments. So if it's part of an amendment, then we have jurisdiction over it, if it's not, then it's not. But I think that, and, you know, council can advise us as to, you know, what our purview is in dealing with height and the berm and things like that. I think it, you know, it would be good, I think, to get the applicant's, you know, response to some of these issues, because, you know, we, I think our effort is, is to be collaborative and for neighbors to try to do the best they can for one another, and I think that they have demonstrated a lot of goodwill and real intelligence in the amendments that they propose. So I think their hearts are in the right place, if it's reasonable. They're not going to spend huge amounts of money.
We totally.
Trying to address these issues, but I think, but I think there may be some compromises that can be made. I don't know who, sir.
Use the microphone.
Yeah, yeah.
We're happy to respond.
Yeah, please respond to this.
And just, you know, just the record, we're not here to hold them up.
Oh, no, 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 understood. That's what a public hearing is all about.
I mean, I think, it is a little awkward with the whole site.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we really need you guys talking into the microphone.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
It is a little bit weird, because the village board approved the site plan with that caveat, which obviously you remembered, and I applaud you for that, because it was a long time ago, but there was always this issue about the height, because it was very hard to tell what the maximum height, and now like they're changing a few things, the balconies and some other, you know, as part of their plan, so they are opening up the site plan. But again, we want them to hopefully come up with something that they can live with and will be better for the community. So, thank you.
All right.
So just very briefly to respond to Leslie, and I want to start by saying, I appreciate her comments, I think she knows and we know, we really have been trying to work collaboratively. Leslie and I know each other for many, many years, and I was pleased to know that she was representing the Arbers, and I hope she was pleased to know I was representing Sunrise. So we have had the back and forth, specifically on her issues. I'll take the berm first. None of us feel that the building is jarring. I would submit that the building that's there right now, that's probably jarring, unsightly, and we're really excited to bring the Sunrise and to Perkins Eastman Building, that I know Stuart and Valerie and their colleagues are extremely proud of, we're really happy to bring that to Rybrook. The berm was discussed, debated, years before I was involved in this, approved, and Sunrise believes it's designed to do its job, you all thought it through correctly, the Board of Trustees approved it, so they have chosen not to revisit the berm. We believe that Rick Parisi's landscaping, that he has designed, and we shared with you at the last meeting, it's really nice landscape, it's a lot of stuff going in, trees, bushes, shrubs, annuals, perennials, there's a lot going in. So anyone that feels that driving on Arbor, is it Arbor Drive?
Drive.
Arbor Drive today isn't the greatest visual approach to the Arbers, they're going to get more than their money's worth with this. So that's our answer on the berm. As far as the height of the building, despite what my friend and colleague Leslie has said on the height, the height was reviewed, approved by the village, it is zoning compliant, and she's 100% right. There was one specific condition in the original resolution. That condition said that they were being referred to the ARB specifically for the ARB to look at the height, catch this, this is the key, with regard to whether or not the HVAC and mechanicals could be better hidden. It was not about dropping the height.
Right.
The height was approved, we have not exceeded that height, we've demonstrated that to your board, we've demonstrated that to the ARB, and my understanding, and I was not at the ARB meeting, but half of my team was, Chairman Levy looked very carefully at the HVAC units that they were asked to, that my team was asked to describe. He asked exactly what the space that they were going to be dropped into the roof area was, and my understanding, and I defer to you and your professional staff, is that the ARB, and specifically the chairman, indicated, quote, "This issue is closed," that he was, he and the board was satisfied that we had more than, my clients had more than adequately masked the mechanicals. I don't know what George Comfort and Sons did, I don't know what was originally done, but my understanding is that Sunrise has addressed this issue. So we know we needed to deal with that as a condition, we think we have. With regard to our friendly neighbor's request that the building come down further, the answer unfortunately, but honestly, is no. We expect that they're going to be very pleased with the building, very pleased with the clientele, very pleased with the improvements to the road, very pleased with the sidewalk improvements, and I appreciate the chair's comments earlier. We're here for what I said when I stood up at the first meeting before you, very limited amended site plan approval. We're not here to reopen stuff that apparently spent years through full secret. We're eliminating the Juliet balconies and putting in nice new terraces and balconies. We've reduced the size of the overall building. We have added garage space so that people that are lucky enough to live in the townhouses can actually have two cars and keep them indoors. We have moved a bedroom from upstairs downstairs so that there is a second bedroom on the main level. Overall, I said one phrase to you in my initial comments, we are not here to make this project bigger, we are here to make this project better. We know Sunrise has made the project better. I would ask, obviously, there may be other comments, but respectfully, we would ask that your board close the public hearing tonight so that we can move forward with the amended approvals.
Well, in terms of timing on that, I mean, we're, I think, held up, so to speak, to await for secret review to be completed, which I think would be next month.
You can't vote for sure, Mr. Chairman, we're not asking you to vote, and you.
Right, so my preference would be just to keep the public hearing open until next month. I think, I think the main comments of the public have been addressed, unless anyone else has any, has any other comments. Yes, sir?
Dan's not going to miss an opportunity.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Just, it's obviously up to the board's discretion if they want to. Just, it's obviously up to the board's discretion if they want to keep the public hearing open or close it today, like Mr. Seymour said, a vote cannot be taken before SECR. But I understand that the Emergency Service Task Force, we touched on that earlier, has not issued a memo, so, you know, it's something to consider, whether you want to hear, have all the information before closing the public hearing.
I mean, I think that's, that's my preference.
Send the email.
Yeah.
So it's my answer, to keep the public meeting open until next month?
Yeah.
Okay, good, so then I'm, if I was gonna say, the only thing that I need to say today then, something came up in conversation, it may have nothing to do-
Excuse me, your name, please?
Dan Barnett, President of the Arbers HOA.
Okay, thank you.
So, to reiterate what Leslie was saying, they've been a wonderful breath of fresh air to this process, they have been listening to us. You know, obviously, we're gonna have disagreements, and it happens here, but we are happy with, you know, hopefully this goes through with Sunrise, and they'll be a good partner to us. Something came up when I was listening, just because, oh, God, I've been president for 10 years of the Arbers, so the conversation came up about the sewer and how it ties into ours. So I don't know if you're aware, and I know this was brought up by me 10 years ago, but who can remember that far, we have a lot of issues with the sewers in the Arbers, specifically at 41 Hillendale, where it exits. That house is on the market, $4 million house, it's very nice, I've been in it. It's notorious for having sewage come out of the backyard, just come right up at various times. That requires that the Arbers, by village rule, is required to pay to have, I think it's four manhole covers to access, and we have to jet it twice a year. That has backed up, I believe, twice. The owner of 41 Hillendale, Matt, has taken upon himself to also hire people to come when the months when the Arbers doesn't do it. He runs the softball team I play on, that's how I know him. And I was thrown at the first conversation that we had about it. I remember the first weekend I became Board President, I got a phone call from the previous owner screaming at me, and I had no idea what was going on, because he had a graduation party, and there was sewage coming out of the backyard. That was my second day as president. What I'm trying to say here is, is that that is what's going on for the last 10 years without someone adding by being there. And so having someone to really look at this, to make sure that it can really handle it, and that maybe that responsibility, or the benefit of 41 Hillendale is not just our responsibility, that it's a joint responsibility to make sure that those lines are clear, because if they have an additional 200-plus people or more, it's gonna be 400 people living there, plus working there, 500 people using the bathrooms, I'm guessing, unlike an office building that was there previously, where it was at different times, we weren't there using the bathroom, people are using the bathroom at the same time we're using the bathroom, because now it's all residential. And so I'm nervous that there's gonna be an increased problem, and this is not a reason to not do this project, but certainly, the residents of Hillendale don't, shouldn't have to live with that, and it doesn't back up into our community, backs up into theirs, specifically that house. So I wanted to bring to everyone's attention here, because that just sounds terrible.
Yeah. Mike, are we aware of this, or, it sounds like there's a history?
So our consultant AI engineers is reviewing the sanitary sewer numbers, and they've been in contact with John Myers engineers, and they're reviewing that. 41 Hillendale, yes, there is a maintenance plan in place to prohibit these things from happening, and that's why that agreement is in place, and what I have requirement is that that is their last two manholes where the entire sewer system empties out into the villages. So that's why that requirement is in there, to maintain and monitor that location, to camera it and clean it X number of times a year. I'm here 20 years, there have been maybe one or two backups in that location, okay? Before my time, I can't tell you, but that's why that agreement is there. That's why that responsibility is there.
Is this all gravity flow, Mike?
I'm sorry?
It's all gravity flow.
Yes, it's all gravity.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Unless there are any other comments from the public, what we will do is, we will continue reviewing this application next month. Hopefully, we'll get some closure on some of the outstanding issues that need to be addressed before we can come to a vote on this and approve the site plan. And we'll keep the public hearing open in the event that the public has additional comments regarding the application, and we'll come to closure next month, so that we can get on to building this project, which I think everyone would like to be, have done.
Very much appreciate that. And Mike, if you can send us that task force memo when you get your hands on it-
I'll email Steve.
We will respond, or do whatever we need to, and we look forward to seeing you next month. And George, in the interim, I will remind you and Jen, we need to just make sure that the Board of Trustees closes out the SECR.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
I have been thinking about this, and I know, I know you're gonna tell me that I am totally off the road on the subject. I like this project, I like what the applicant is doing, I like the Sunrise experience, and I would like to see this project move. And I was thinking about it, you know, I came from the construction all my life on the government side, so I always dealt with some sort of incentive at the beginning, called some sort of a performance bond, where we would require an applicant to put a bond. And I don't mean a full-scale bond where you go 400% of the construction cost, but I would like to see some sort of a small incentive bond that would be tied to either start of construction or completion of demolition, in the range of about 10%, 15% of the total construction budget. So that once the village issues the permit, construction permit, which hopefully could be done soon, that within a certain period of time, one month, two months, three months, the applicant will start the construction, and then maybe within the three months, they will finish the demolition. And I would like to see us, some kind of an incentive. Now, you may say that that's not possible, that's not legal, that's not part of the amendment, the board should have done that a long time ago, and, but we lost four years. And I hate to see us lose another four years. I mean, that is a big penalty to the village. Would the small incentive change anything? Probably not, but it would make me feel at ease, that I try my best. I'm gonna leave it at that.
Well, I guess, John, my response to that is, I don't know generally what they do in these things, but my sense is that unlike the original applicant, Sunrise is actually a manager of these facilities.
Right.
They have an incentive to have this project completed as soon as possible, because that's how they make money. And if that's not an incentive, I don't know what is. So I can definitely see such a bond being appropriate when you're dealing with a developer that doesn't really have a long-term stake in the development of the project, and it's easy for them to just put things off because it's not economically feasible, which is exactly what happened to this project. But now, I think we're in a different situation, where we're dealing with a serious player in our village who's gonna be owning and operating a facility and generating an income from that facility. I guess, I'm not saying that John's point isn't relevant, it's probably worth consideration, but, I mean, my view is, is that the incentives are probably built into the project.
So I'm gonna respond very briefly, somewhat cavalierly, but somewhat, somewhat seriously. I'm gonna let George and your village attorney advise you on what you can and cannot do.
It is, that's okay.
Right, right. We are aware of that.
I started my conversation with that.
George is hoping that I'll do it, but I'm not gonna do it. But, Mr. Gresz, and I got a great idea. You want to help incentivize this, which we totally appreciate. When I have to go deal with the Westchester County IDA and the Town of Rye to help finalize the pilot incentivization-
We'll be there.
You're coming with me.
We'll be there.
We're gonna do that together.
Yeah.
Because if you want to help incentivize this project, that's where you should do it with me.
I think it's a beautiful project, and I'd just like to see it go, and I don't want to see us another four years, and you come back, three months after three months, and ask for an extension. That would be really, yeah.
Agreed. And if you could also control interest rates and the market, that would be helpful.
Now you're asking too much.
No, that's different, different kind of management.
John can do a lot of things, who knows? All right, anyway, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
So, I guess it's anonymous, my idea was struck down, right? I just want to make sure that I understand that.
I think, actually, in the Village Board resolution, there is a performance bond required. So it's not a timeframe, so I think what you-
You want to use the mic? I'm sorry.
Doesn't work, so it doesn't matter.
I know, I know it's illegal, because I have done it all my life, so I know the performance bond is illegal.
Actually, the Village Board made them put a, they have a requirement of a performance bond, I think that'll be at the time of getting a building permit. I think the one thing that there isn't, which I think is what you were trying to say, is they don't have a time period where they have to start the construction.
Right, yes, that's, that's what I want to do.
So, I don't know, and I'm sure Sunrise, and maybe at some point, they'll be gracious enough to tell us, but if you remember, one of the things about the demolition is we wanted it to be done when school is out, because it's so close to the school.
Right.
So I don't know if they have a timeframe yet, because I think they're the contract mandate, but it probably would be helpful at some point to get some kind of construction schedule from them. But the only thing you could do as a board is put a timeframe, I've seen boards do this, it's not the greatest, but a timeframe when you have to start, and if you don't, they'd have to come back and just explain why they haven't started by the start.
That's already in effect, we do do that.
You do have that.
Right.
Ms. Snyder, I did ask for construction schedule last meeting, and I did mention to Mike, construction management plan. If it does not have a construction schedule, to me, it's not a plan.
Right, it was probably a very, you know, at the time, in 2020, it was probably a rough one.
It's also-
They really didn't have a lot of planning.
Also, as long, as long as what they can do is subject to third-party approvals, which is, I think, your point, I think it's very difficult to come up with a, with a plan, I mean, they can come up with a theoretical plan that, once they get the approvals, you know, this is how they want to proceed, but I think in terms of when it actually, in terms of setting a date, I imagine that could be difficult, because they don't have any control over some of these agencies that they need approvals from.
I totally agree, I think that's what David's point was, a valid one.
Yeah.
And I don't agree for a minute, pardon me, that we need to have a demolition outside the school year, school year. I mean, buildings, there's construction going on all over, so I don't think that the demolition of the building should bother the kids in the classroom. I really, the noise level should not be that high, that's gonna bother anybody.
I don't want to speak, I don't want to speak, because I know that is a big concern of the parents, that big concern.
Where we have problem with the construction is when applicant or contractor does not communicate with the people that are living nearby, and tell them in advance what's gonna happen, how is it gonna happen, and what's to inspect. And to me, that's the part of the construction management plan, 50% of that what's written is interaction and communication. If you are upfront, people will accept it, and they will move on.
We're hopeful that Sunrise will-
I don't think that's relevant now.
Yeah, I think, I think everyone is incentivized to do the right thing. You want happy neighbors.
So, no bond, right?
No bond.
Okay.
Have a nice holiday, whichever you celebrate.
Our next applicant is 123 North Ridge Street. Mr. Scarletto, you are up.
David?
Let me email Steve. Please. You got it.
Why would we not have some performance bond? Why would we not have a performance?
I don't know.
I have done that with construction in New York.
Mike? Mike?
I'm sorry?
IDA currently on the building.
I have no idea. I'm sorry.
I'm not sure how I feel about it. I think it, it depends on the way they are gonna demolish it.
Are they trying to get in?
I agree with you, that they're gonna have to meet with people anyway.
That's what Dan and Chris-
Rob, is there any chance we're gonna get out of here by nine o'clock, do you think?
That's gonna take time.
So we'd be I get that.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay.
I think so. For, I mean, to your, excuse me, to your letter, I think the general consensus is that we are in agreement with you about-
About what?
About the, the plan, revised in order to address all of these variances.
I'm going to Florida.
We agree with your aesthetic sense on that.
Okay, so do you want to say what it looks like with aesthetics? Or does it work?
Yes, that was gonna be my request.
Okay, I mean, I'll put on the screen what I said.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's very helpful, right?
Yeah. I mean, look, and I think our effort is, is to, to the extent the variances can be minimized, we try to do that within reason, but we want an aesthetically pleasing project, and if, and we are confident that if you do the best you can, we'll back you with that. Sorry.
Okay, so, and I get where you're coming from, because it's good to see, if you eliminated stuff, what the verdict is. So, so what I did to eliminate it was, we had, we, the point was, shift the second floor over. The house isn't that big, it's only 24 feet wide, so it's like, I can't like take two feet out of the house, because it's really a limited house, so I had cantilevered it, I moved the front porch over. And then, you know, we cut the deck back, the porch back, and we just did the roof over the side. And the house does look a little strange if you're driving by, and especially if you have a park across the street, it definitely looked a little interest, you know, it didn't look as good as it did, so.
So you're saying we're not getting an architectural review?
I'm not getting some kind of wonderful nomination for this, most likely. And unfortunately, also, it's on a busy street where people actually drive by this house, so if I'm gonna have a house that's not looking really good, this isn't probably the location to do it.
I think we, as Rob said, we like your strategy.
I mean, it's down in like two acres, where nobody sees it, you know, if a client, you know, if you can get away with doing a house that's not real attractive. All right, so then, with my letter, and I had talked to Mike, and he said, "That's kind of where you're leaning." I said, "The parking, I totally, I totally understood."
Right. That, I don't think we, and we didn't have, at least, I didn't have, and our consultants didn't have an issue with the parking.
Right, so we moved the parking to the side, then it makes more sense, so that was where I was the whole time, anyway. So, so now what we did on this one is, we left the house open, the addition over the second floor, I left the front porch where it was, we still pulled the deck back, because then we're within our square footage of the size of the deck. And this one shows the height setback, so if I actually move this up.
This is the revised-
This is the revised one, which is going back to kind of what I had before, it still kept the deck moved over.
What's the overall height of the building?
And this-
By the cord, if you measure it by the cord, what is the overall height? Is it more than 30 feet, or less than 30 feet?
No, we're not, the total height of the building works, the total, I brought my board so I could actually see. Total height of the building is, we're allowed 30, we're at like 28.25. So the main height of the building works, the problem is the height setback doesn't work on the left side, because we're already two feet into our setback. So this is, like, this is, this is how much it cuts through, like, it's right in here. So it's not like it's, you know, that's on the side of the house. So that's where, that's where the number is off by the two, is as it cuts through the e to the house, so.
Can you show that to the zoning board when you before them?
Yeah, yeah.
Can that piece be made, like a flap, it goes down during the day, and so moves?
I mean, it would screw up the inside of the house if I had to have to cut the end off, so it's just, it's like, it's kind of like, I don't think anybody drive by this house is going to, and the neighbor next door is really gonna be like, "Oh, my God, it's a little too tall." It's really, like, for the height line that it's cutting through, it's not missing by that much, and it's really-
Your front porch is still extending into the scenic overlay, right?
Correct. The whole house is in the scenic overlay.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm adding the porch into it, but I just think the porch makes more sense, and it does relate to the other houses that are there.
Okay.
And also realize the scenic overlay increased the setback, so-
Yes.
When this house was built, you know, that part of it was conforming. Why the side yard isn't conforming, I don't know, but- Why the side yard isn't conforming, I don't know, but...
I personally like this plan.
Yeah. No, no, it's...
And we tried to keep the house still off.
I think you're doing it, yeah.
Well, I think it's better than the other one.
I know. But I understand, you asked if you tried to do it, what would you encounter, and that's what we would encounter, so I think I...
It was a good intellectual exercise. But, no, no, I mean, this is practical.
Todd appreciated it.
Yeah.
Todd in my office appreciated drawing it. I mean, when he emailed back to me, he was like, "This is just horrible."
Well, no, this is, I mean, look, whatever the, I think it's a very reasonable plan. I think it's something that the, you know, when we refer it to the zoning board, our comments would be, you know, we think that the variances should be granted to make the house into an aesthetic pleasing house that's consistent with the architecture in the neighborhood and not some oddball structure.
Right, because there's enough houses in that row that have bad additions on them.
No.
Which we're not trying to copy.
Right, right.
Some are really nicely done.
The chairman.
Yes.
And we, I guess the public hearing is open, so you will not close the public hearing until you get the feedback. Can you close the public hearing before you get feedback from the zoning board?
I don't think we have a business.
Yeah, no, no, we have to, we have to set a public hearing. You're talking about this application, right? Yeah, with this application...
We never made one, no.
Oh, we did not set a public hearing yet?
No, you wanted me to work...
Why am I reading the resolution here? That was, okay, that's for tonight.
Okay, so what we'll do is, based on these plans, which, you know, Sarah will, you know, will review and Mike will review, but I don't see any reason why we can't set a public hearing for these plans for next month, and also, and also make a referral to the ZBA.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you'll make your pitch to them, but, you know, when I was speaking to someone formerly was on the ZBA, you know, if it's a reasonable request based on, you know, how something should be constructed, the ZBA is open to this, so...
Well, I also have the other set I can show.
That's true. That's true. I don't think I have a problem.
Can we make a photo today to the ZBA?
Yeah, yeah, I think we'll do that. So I guess first, let's, we have a referral resolution.
Yeah, we're getting the June date.
Okay.
It's going to have to be June because by the time, in order for them to be on zoning, they have to apply the month before.
Oh, Christ, okay.
So have I missed the deadline, or, I don't know?
I don't know.
That's a terror.
They're applying now for...
I mean, I know the application is already in, and the money is already paid, and there's already a form in for the old variances, which I will have to correct.
Correct, but they give you a new letter.
But it's whether Tara can do it and whether it's the noticing.
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve would have to regenerate it.
Well, because he's going to have to give you a new letter of denial based on this new plan.
Well, actually, maybe not, because I could notice for more variances than I needed and then, and then just not, then just have it striked out. I eliminated the front yard parking. I mean, we have to see if the mailing, because if the mailing, if I miss the mailing deadline and she missed the public notice, that's our issue.
Right. Well, in our resolution, we don't know often when the ZBA meets, so we can simply issue the referral resolution and you can work it out.
May 6th is the next meeting.
Yeah, it's the second Tuesday.
All right.
The first Tuesday.
Well, it's the first Tuesday, that's right, the first Tuesday.
Okay, so if we make a referral now, they'll see it, they'll deal with it in May.
I mean, I think we could actually be on the next meeting if I, if I like get the stuff done like by tomorrow or Monday.
Yeah.
I'll check, I'll check.
But the mechanics of it, I honestly don't know in terms of whether you need, I mean, do you need a denial with the specific variances that...
You do, yes.
Yes.
Because the notices are...
That's the problem?
It always has to be the exact variance.
Okay, so how do you, how do we do that?
So, yes, to get a letter of denial for the building.
Okay, so Steve will look at these plans that you're presenting us now, and he'll provide you, how much in advance do they need, do they need that?
Month in advance. The deadline is the month prior.
Okay, all right, all right.
I mean, we can only do what we can do. So if you set the public hearing, we just delay it if I can't get to zoning before.
Well, we can set the public hearing, and then if you want, we adjourn it until such a time as the ZBA approves it, then we'll just adjourn it.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll just say we're going to do that.
All right, so do we have a res...
And then we'll always extend it.
We have any...
Right.
Put it to May 8th, and then we'll just extend it.
Right, exactly. So what should we do first, the ZBA referral?
Yes.
Okay, let's do the ZBA referral.
That's what I need first.
Therefore be resolved. What's going to be it?
Yeah.
I don't know what's going to happen.
You could just make a, I don't know how you guys do it with the resolutions, but you could just make a motion to refer to the ZBA.
Fine, fine.
But, so I understand then, it's the plans being presented tonight. Can we, for the record, is there a plan number or something we could just clarify? Because typically, you know, when you refer to the ZBA, you want it to be as close to something as final as possible, because you don't want it to go to the ZBA, and then while you're at planning board, it changes. So if this is what we think is as close to final as possible, I would just want, for the record, to be very clear what drawing we're looking at, because I don't think what we just saw was necessarily what was accompanying that letter.
It wasn't what was presented last time.
Yeah, yeah.
So the new one is...
But George, I like to see the planning board input in the referral.
Yeah.
We looked at the first plan, the applicant revised those plans, and we don't believe that the second plans...
Yeah.
Well, you know, you know what we can do?
I can submit a set right now.
You know what we can do? We can, we can, we can either move for a referral, or we can, and then, I mean, sometimes afterwards, you'll come up with the right language.
Yeah, exactly.
And then it'll go to the ZBA, so we don't have to figure out the language tonight, but...
But you can give your input, for sure. You can make the motion to refer to the ZBA, this is what our thoughts are.
Exactly.
And then the resolution will just track all that after the fact. That's fine.
And I guess, I guess our feeling is that the, is that the...
A1 to A10.
Yeah, is that this proposal, you know, minimizes to the degree possible the variances that, well, that we recommend the plan because the variances have been, are minimized to the degree that they can be, you know, as a function, and still maintain aesthetically pleasing, you know, site plan that conforms with the structures of the neighborhood, something like that.
And I like to basically say that, you know, the input from the planning board, the applicant revised the plans, which clearly not as aesthetically pleasing as the preview, as these plans that we are submitting now for the review by the zoning board.
Right. Exactly, we can go, we can go so far as that we reviewed, we reviewed plans that attempted to address all the variances, and, you know, we concluded that the revised plan is more appropriate. We'll figure it out.
We can figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
Sure, we can figure, but you guys could still make that motion as long as it's on the record, and do we have a drawing number or...
So A1 to A10?
A1 to A10.
And drawing L1?
And drawing L1.
Revised 41025.
Revised 41025, just for the record, so that it's very clear what is being referred. Now, in terms of the denial letter, that's a separate issue that happens in the background, but it does have to be updated so that the exact variances are known and the public notices are given accordingly.
Yeah, John will, John will deal with that, but, so anyways, can we just have a motion? Okay, can I, okay, I need a second to move.
You can make a motion to refer to the ZBA with the conditions.
That we refer this application to the zoning board.
Got it.
Yeah, with the considerations that you guys have discussed.
Yeah, subject to the...
Mr. Grzan?
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Michonne?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have a resolution to set a public hearing for next, let's do it next month.
I make a recommendation, the motion that we open on the public hearing on this application.
Yeah, well, you have a actual resolution.
On May 8th, 2025. Okay, whereas the applicants, Kevin Miller and Emily Miller, submitted an application for approval of a site plan for the construction of a second-floor addition, new front porch, new rear deck on the property located at 123 North Ridge Street, located in the R10 zoning district and the North Ridge Street scenic overlay district. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board will hold a public hearing on May 8th, 2025, at 6:30 in Village Hall. Be it further resolved that the applicant is hereby directed to comply with section 250-40 of the Village Code regarding notification of the public hearing.
Motion in second?
Moved. Second.
Mr. Grzan?
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Michonne?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, next up?
Next up, I'll thank you, my board. Okay, next up is 35 Metalark Road.
Yeah.
We're back to change the driveway.
I remember that.
Right.
Because we can't move, Con Ed can't move the utility pole.
Right.
Because the wires aren't all on the same side of the street, they're across the street the way it works, this is not possible to do. So we're here to revise the site plan. We want to bring the driveway up a little further on the road because where it is right now, we have the curve and working with the grades, so we prefer the driveway to be further up the road where it straightens out as opposed to being right on the curve. So the proposal is to bring the driveway to the, above the pole, and then turn into the house, and then come down and turn into the driveway, and then create a slate K-turn so you can back out of the garage and go up the driveway, so you can pull out of the driveway as opposed to backing out onto the road. So that's, that's the only change. To be perfectly honest, it's less impervious than the straight Y driveway because the straight Y driveway was too lane-wide to fully up the thing, and this is now one lane coming in and then this pans out.
Right.
So we're actually less impervious than we were before, so there's less blacktop, and actually, I think it's going to look better, a little more interesting and better. And then we have a landscaping plan, we're doing a slate retaining wall and then some landscaping, and I know the review comments were, some of the landscaping should be different.
Yeah, yes.
Well, just native species, right?
Yeah.
Well, I think also in size, right?
Height.
Yeah, and some height.
All right, a little bit of height and species.
Yeah, to change the species to some native species and add a little height to screen that turnaround area.
Five to eight feet, right?
Yeah. I mean, what kind of evergreens did you have in mind?
I really just care about them being native species. I just really would prefer native species. I don't have a specific one in mind when we made the recommendation.
Could you give me some suggestions of different ones, like, email me later or something?
Sure, I can give you some suggestions, yes.
Hopefully some concepts of the ones you like, because that just makes my life easier.
I mean, I...
As far as the hydrangeas go, I was thinking oak leaf hydrangeas because they're natural or native, and they give, they're a higher height at full maturity.
Okay, I mean, it's good to know, so I'd like to have your, you know...
And I can give you a recommendation on an evergreen as well.
Okay, no, I appreciate a bunch of different ones that you think are good, because I like to do kind of a variety as opposed to having everything look boring, like a straight Y.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does anyone have any comment about the driveway itself?
No, it gets great.
I mean, that turnaround is only a turnaround.
It's only a turnaround, it's not big enough to fit a car, so it's not parking. I reviewed that with Steve.
Yeah.
Because I related it a little bit on getting here, because he had to make sure that it didn't need parking.
Right.
Because I didn't want to go for a garage, which is fine. It's really just so you can back out of the driveway, back out of the garage in turn, because they plan on using the garage for cars.
The gas line, did the gas line have any comment on this or no? Can I see?
I mean...
It's outside of the jurisdiction, right?
Right, I'm not, I'm not on the easement, and the driveway is actually further from where the easement was. I mean, they're happy that we got the driveway off their easement.